This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the November 6, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Peichl is attending remotely. Commissioner Peichl, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on the township website for public access. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public meeting, public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on October 22 and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Agenda item four is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to address the board? Is there anyone online? A hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to agenda item five. Meeting minutes from the October 16, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting were distributed in advance. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item six, presentations. We have agenda item six A swearing in of fire police for Woodlawn Fire Department. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please present this agenda item.
Thank you. In a first-class township, the president of the Board of Commissioners may confirm any member of a volunteer fire company nominated to serve as special fire police under relevant state statutes, Chapter 74, relating to special fire police. The president of the Board of Commissioners may swear in or affirm special fire police officers. So the tax resolution has been prepared to effectuate the appointment of the following individuals of the Woodland Fire, Woodlawn Fire Department as special fire police. Aman Rahman, Iram Khan, and Atasham Sajjad, if I've mispronounced, I do apologize. So we would ask for approval of the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township confirming individuals nominated by the volunteer fire companies as special fire police.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Just a note for the public. The fire police, we're very fortunate to have quite a few members here serving the township. They're all very important members of our public safety services that serve our community, and we certainly do thank you for your willingness to serve. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions on this resolution. Are there any public comments? Any online? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. At this time, I would ask Aman Rahman, Iram Khan, and Antisham Sajid to please come up to the podium so that you can officially be sworn in for your role as fire police. You would raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
Support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
The ordinances of township and South Whitehall.
And that I will discharge the duties of special fire police
And I will discharge the duties of fire police.
In South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County.
In South Whitehall Township, Lehigh Valley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
If you are in agreement with the oath of office, please answer "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item six B. We have South Whitehall Township Police Battle of the Badges event presentation. I'll ask interim chief Brown to please present.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. On the August 30, 2024, we had our annual Battle of the Badges that took place at the Lehigh Valley Iron Pigs game. It was prior to the Iron Pigs game that we actually played. This is a charity softball game that is a friendly competition between neighboring departments, South Whitehall and Whitehall Township. Actually, the bargaining units raised the money by going to gracious donors and organizations and businesses and ticket sales. We were able to raise $14,000 to give to support families and children battling cancer. All the funds were donated to HUGS for pediatric cancer warriors and will go directly to providing financial assistance, emotional support, and resources to help ease the burdens of these families facing this during these challenging times. The community's generosity and participation in the event made a meaningful impact, bringing hope and relief to those in need, and we appreciate everybody's help.
Excellent. Thank you. And I believe you have a presentation to make this evening?
Yes, we do. We're going to present them with the check for $14,000.
Fantastic.
And we have Lieutenant Derek Williams here from Whitehall.
Very good. We thank you for being here from Whitehall Township and thank you for partnering with our department for this very worthy cause. Agenda item six C is the first reading of the 2025 proposed budget. I'll ask Tricia Dickert, our Director of Finance, to please present.
Good evening, commissioners. And first and foremost, I just want to thank all of you once more for a very productive budget workshop meeting last week. So I'll jump right into it. I'm going to read this because when I ad lib, I tend to miss a few things here and there. So we'll start with the general fund. South Whitehall Township is projecting $20.88 million in revenues for 2025. This is an increase of 5% over 2024. Budgeted expenditures are also projected at $21.55 million, which is an increase of 8% from the prior year. Total revenues of $20,881,474.37. Total expenses, $21,559,923.37. And then the cash carry forward, or $678,449, brings us to an even budget, no surplus, no deficit. For the 2025 budget, we will be earmarking the use of that $678,449 from the 2024 cash carry forward, also known as the fund balance, to fund the scanning project for 2025. This puts our fund balance at $11.3 million as of the end of 2024. The fund balance policy for general requires between 20 and 30% of yearly general fund revenues, and at the end of 2024, we will be at approximately 54%. We're forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward to be $4,814,988.40. And of this, keep in mind that $3 million is still combined with the fiscal stability monies that are earning additional interest. And as mentioned above, that $678,449 that we're earmarking for that scanning project. To date, the interest earned on the general fund fiscal stability monies is just over $367,000, the exact number being 367,238.81. And that's earning an interest, that's earning at an interest rate currently of 5%. Just some notes on the cash carry, just some notes on the cash carry forward. There are a few things that feed this every year, so we just like to offer that as a reminder. Those factors being unspent carry forward from prior years, revenues coming in higher than projected, departments spending less than the original anticipated need, and again, just keeping in mind that some objects are funded for unforeseen circumstances. So when we don't have those unforeseen circumstances, those monies just roll over and become a part of that carry forward. That is all I have for general. So unless anyone has any questions, I'll move on to the next fund.
Are there any board questions at this point? No. Okay. Thank you.
So the fire fund, the township is projecting $1.36 million in revenues for 2025. This is less than a 1% decrease over 2024. Budgeted expenditures are projected at $1.16 million, which is an increase of 32% from the current year. That leaves us at total revenues of $1,360,000, total expenses of $1,160,000, leaving a surplus of $200,000. So that surplus will be transferred into the fire apparatus account from the 2025 fire tax revenues. Additionally, there will be a $200,000 transfer from the general fund into fire fiscal stability, and that's to be put towards future use for the replacement radio project. We're forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward to be $816,374.21, and this will also help with the upcoming radio replacement. The cash carry forward will also be used to get the fire fund operations through the first three months of the year until the 2025 fire tax revenues start to come in. Before we started building this, what we would see is a loan from the general fund to help fund the fire department fund for the first three months until those tax revenues started to come in. The interest earned to date on the fire fiscal stabilities is $341.94, and that current APY is 0.55%. So we can't quite move those monies to a higher yielding interest account, which is why you're seeing the return on those funds be less. Just some notes again on the cash carry forward. From the onset, the fire budget is structured to end up with a surplus that can then be used for the following: saving for fiscal, saving for apparatus, and in this case, the radio replacement project, saving for capital, and then again, having enough funds to maintain operations for the beginning part of any year without seeking a loan from the general fund to get them through. That's all I have on fire. If there are any questions?
Very good. Any questions at this point?
So we'll move on to water. For the water fund, we're forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward to be $3,022,113.65. The township is projecting $13.04 million in revenues for the year 2025. That's an increase of 167% over 2024. The budgeted expenditures are projected at $10.83 million, which is an increase of 148% over 2024. Those numbers broken down are revenue of $13,004,270.46, and expenses of $10,836,488.14. That leaves us with a surplus of $2,206,216.46. LCA is raising their water rates for 2025 by 4.95%. But at this time, there's no rate increase being proposed, being passed on to the residents of the township. This puts our fund balance at $8.1 million at the end of 2024, which is greater than the $5 million that's required for the fund balance policy. Interest earned to date on the water fiscal stability monies is $196,727.05, and again, that interest rate is 5%. Some notes on cash carry forward. The water budget is structured to build the fund balance to prepare for future capital infrastructure expenses. This also includes unspent carry forward from prior years. The biggest factor contributing to the 167% increase in revenue and the 148% increase in expenses is due to the start of the Nestle Project coming onboard for 2025. They will be using up to 500,000 gallons of water a day. So if there are any questions relative to the water fund, we will answer them now, and if there are not, I will move on.
Board questions at this time?
Okay. So moving on to sewer. For sewer, we're forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward at $1,952,840.46. The township is projecting $3.89 million in revenues for 2025, which is a 6% decrease from 2024. The budgeted expenditures are projected at $3.89 million, which is also a decrease by 5% this time for 2024. Broken down, it's revenues totaling $3,895,914, and the same with expenses, leaving a flat zero, no deficit, no surplus. LCA is raising their rates by 4.7% in 2025, and the township is proposing a 4% sewer increase being passed on to township residents, which is in line with the sewer rate study that was conducted in 2024. This puts our fund balance at $5.23 million as of the end of 2024, which is less than the $10 million required per the fund balance policy. This requirement was set as such due to the Klein's Island expansion. Interest earned to date on sewer fiscal stability is $131,579.86, and the current APY is 5%. Notes on cash carry forward. The sewer budget is structured to build the fund balance to prepare for the Klein's Island expansion as well as any other future capital infrastructure expenses. This includes, again, unspent carry forward from prior years. With the recommendation from the rate study and LCA's 2025 rate increase, we believe it's imperative that we do at least the recommended 4% in 2025, keeping in mind again that the rate increase that's being passed on to us is 4.7%. For 2025, the proposed sewer rates with the 4% increase, the flat rate would be $91 per quarter, and that's an increase from $87.50. Correction, that's $91 per quarter per EDU. So it would go from $87.50 to $91. The sewer metered would go from $4.79 per 1,000 gallons to $4.98 per 1,000 gallons. And the sewer base charge would increase from $35 per quarter to $36 per quarter. And if you have any questions on sewer, I'll answer them now.
Board questions?
For refuse, we're forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward to be $323,101.53. The township is projecting $5.09 million in revenues for 2025, which is an increase of 1% over the year 2024. Budgeted expenses are projected at $4.65 million, which is an increase of 2% over 2024. Those numbers are revenues totaling $5,095,440, and expenses totaling $4,651,004.68. That leaves us with a surplus of $444,393.12. There is no refuse rate increase being passed on to South Whitehall Township residents in 2025. This puts our fund balance at $323,101.53 at the end of 2024, which is $452,000 less than what's required in the fund balance policy. The surplus that's listed above, the $444,393.12, just keep in mind, that's because the first and second year of the five-year contract. What we did when we structured the rate increase is we structured it over the course of five years. So while the township will see an increase each year over the course of those five years, the way the revenue was built and the rate was built, it's designed to sustain us over the course of those five years. So we're not coming back to the board every year asking for another increase on that revenue, on that refuse rate. So if anybody has any questions about refuse, we can... No? Okay. State Highway Aid, we're projecting $718.6000 in revenues for '25, which is a 1% decrease over the year 2024. Budgeted expenditures are projected at $676,000, which is a decrease of 16% from the current year. That brings us to revenues as a total of $718,599.04, and expenses $676,917, leaving us with a surplus of $41,682.04. And the projected or forecasted 2024 cash carry forward for state highway aid is $435,452.23. Any questions on state highway aid? Open Space, we're projecting $45.6000 in revenues for '25, which is a 55% decrease from 2024. The expenses being projected are $214,000, which is the same amount from 2024 due to carrying over of the Vista's project from the year 2024 to the year 2025. That's broken down at revenues $45,635.75, and expenses $214,034. That puts the Open Space Fund at a deficit for 2025 of $168,398.25. But keep in mind, the 2024 cash carry forward is expected to be $442,741.40. So that absorbs any deficit that is projected for 2025. Any questions on Open Space? So ARPA, right now, the township has $1,566,540.71 remaining in ARPA funds. Of that dollar amount, $1 million has already been set aside and appropriated towards replacing an existing aerial truck that's reached the end of its useful life. This truck serves the entire township. The interest that has been received for the ARPA monies has also been earmarked for any additional costs that might be incurred for the truck purchased from the original cost allocation from 2023. That leaves the remaining ARPA funds still to be encumbered. That leaves the remaining ARPA funds still to be encumbered by the police department due to the body camera project coming in well below anticipated costs. Any questions on ARPA use?
No.
Debt service. The total debt payments for 2025 will be $1,057,500. Of that, $685,000 is the principal and $372,000 is the interest. Those are broken down as follows. The water fund will pay interest in the amount of $24,073 and principal of $163,031, for a total of $187,104. And the general fund will pay interest of $348,427, principal of $521,969, for a total of $873.96. Any questions on debt service?
Final page. I'm over my sentence.
So for capital, we have submitted for your consideration capital requests totaling $2,388,909. When capital requests are submitted, the funding sources for those requests come from several places. It comes from grants, inter-fund transfers, and the cash carry forward of the capital fund. For 2025, we identify those capital funding sources as follows: $285,966 in grant revenue, $10,000 in requested donations for the purchase of K-9, $214,034 as an inter-fund transfer from the Open Space Fund, $848,969.72 as an inter-fund transfer from the general fund, and $1,022,939.28 as the forecasted 2024 cash carry forward from the capital fund. The notes just being that there are three major contributors, again, that dump into a forecasted cash carry forward. That's unspent cash carry forward from years prior, projects coming in under budget, projects being done in-house cheaper, HERBS cost sharing agreements for paving, and the sale of fixed assets. That's all I have on capital. If anybody has any questions on that.
Then the budget team and the township present to the commissioners a balanced budget for the year 2025.
Tricia, thank you, and your finance team, and the administration, all department heads for preparing and presenting a very balanced budget. I appreciate the additional line item detail that was included in this year's budget, both for the benefit of the commissioners but also for the public to have more insight into how township dollars are expended for the good of the community. So thank you very much for presenting that to us.
I'll open up to the board if there are comments or questions at this time.
Just one comment. Tricia, I wanted to thank you again for a very thorough, very healthy budget workshop last week. I know you all appreciated and enjoyed it, and we delved into some of the finer details of the budget, but your team is just so well-prepared in answering our questions and also in putting this budget together in coordination with township management and other department heads. So I just, again, wanted to thank you, and I look forward to approving this budget a month from now.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I know Donna and Kristen are online, and they appreciate it as well. So thank you for that.
Tricia, I just want to say thank you. Many thanks to you and Kristen and Donna and all the departments who pulled together and were very conservative with their figures. Also want to thank you for presenting us a concise, well-organized document. It really made it so much easier for us. It's going to make it so much easier for the public to follow. So thank you. It's so straightforward. Thank you, all of you.
And that, just on that, because I feel like you just kind of threw me a meatball there. This will be uploaded for the public to view tomorrow. We'll upload that to the township website tomorrow, and a copy will be in the lobby for public inspection.
Excellent.
Thank you, Patricia. It was very helpful, very easy this year on that. Thank you very much, you and your team.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for that. Commissioner Peichl, I know you're virtual. Do you have any comment at this time?
No, just thank you. You guys did a great job. Thank you for your patience as we asked questions over some of the details last week at the workshop. Appreciate that. But again, well done to the entire team.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Peichl.
If there are no other commissioner comments, I'll ask if there's any public comment at this time. Yes, if you'd please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Don Sheetzly. I live at 1411 Hampton Road. My question for you all was, I came a year ago. We talked about digital signs, and you want to wait till the sidewalks are done. Is there anywhere in the budget to be able to have a digital sign so that people who live here who drive by can keep better informed of it? Even something as good as North Wydall has a great sign, but can't we have a sign out in front so people know leaves and whatever plans are, the meetings and stuff that we have? That's all I want. Thank you. That's all I want. Thank you.
Your question is timely, as we will be coming to the board at a future meeting, probably the next meeting or the subsequent meeting after that, to actually review a digital message board using leftover funds from the bond money that the township was allocated, because we've come in under budget for the Weir's Dam project as well as this sidewalk project. We have additional funds available that we will be seeking to use a portion of those funds for a digital message board to replace the sign out front.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Are there any other public comment at this time? Or anyone online who'd like to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with advertisement of the 2025 South Whitehall Township proposed budget? I'll set motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, Tricia. Agenda item seven A ordinances, we have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the property tax for the fiscal year 2025, levying a real state tax for general revenue purposes and for fire tax purposes for the fiscal year 2025, reaffirming the current tax rates provided within Chapter three twenty-eight taxation of the codified ordinances of South Whitehall Township, and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the township government during the 2025 fiscal year, providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. And Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. So Section seventeen oh nine A of the First Class Township Code requires the Board of Commissioners to fix the property rate for the twenty-five fiscal year in conjunction with the approval of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five annual budget. To each year, the township must pass an ordinance or a resolution to adopt the property tax rate. The township is proposing to adopt an ordinance, which also, in addition to fixing the millage rates, also confirms the appropriated amounts that were read by Finance Director Tricia Dickert earlier this evening from each fund. So the millage rate for 2025, as needed for the 2025 budget, is for the tax rate for general township purposes is two point eight four nine seven five zero mils, and the tax rate for fire tax purposes is point four seven mils. The total millage rate is three point three one nine seven five, which is no change from the last few fiscal years. With that in mind, I would seek a motion to advertise this ordinance so that it can be ordained in time for the adoption of the budget during the December, first December meeting of this year.
Very good, Tom. Again, thank you, Finance, Administration, and all department heads, both for a balanced budget, but also fixing the tax rate, should not have any changes. So thank you for that. Are there any board comments on this agenda? Is there any public comment? Anyone online to comment on this agenda item? I need a motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance adopting the aforementioned tax rates for fiscal year 2025. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five to zero. Then item seven B, we have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter fifty-eight Pension Plans, Article Six Non-Uniform Employees Defined Contribution Pension Plan of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township at Sections fifty-eight dash sixty-five Vesting and Forfeitures, A Vesting One to revise the years of service and vested portion schedule, repealer, severability, and an effective date. Tom, if you would please present.
Thank you. So this amendment to Chapter fifty-eight of the codes of the township essentially amends the pension plan that the vesting period for the defined contribution plan will be lowered from seven years to five years for the defined contribution pension plan only. So this does not impact the defined benefit pension plans. This amendment was the result of collective bargaining negotiations between the Teamsters Local seven seven three, Public Works Union, and the township. So the recommendation for management is to effectuate this change across all eligible defined contribution plan participants, which includes both public works and non-union members. So there's currently forty-six plan members on the roster that would be impacted by this ordinance. So the ordinance was advertised for adoption in the October tenth, twenty twenty-four issue of the Parkland Press newspaper. It was also sent to the Department of Law. It is ready for adoption. If the board is so inclined, I would seek a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Did the township receive any comment from the public on the advertisement of this?
There was no public comments. There was internal questions from employees, which were answered.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open up to the board if there's any comments or questions. I know we've seen this before when we moved to advertise. No questions? Are there any public comment? Any comment online? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to proceed with adoption of said pension vesting period revision ordinance.
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five to zero. Then item seven C, we have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter sixty-two Police Department to add a new Article Three entitled Towing to the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, providing for removal of damaged, disabled, or snowbound vehicles for all types that have been deemed a hazard to the motoring public, and further providing for authorization, specifications, non-exclusive towing contractor, qualification of contractor, insurance, contractor default, liability for subcontractors, payment of bills, snow emergency declaration provision, duration of contract, indemnification, nature of relationship, repealer, failure to enforce, not a waiver, severability, and an effective date. Tom, if you please present.
Thank you. In the past, South Whitehall Township has bid out towing services after establishing the rate for the services within specific bid specifications and an RFP. Towing services are needed for the Police Department for the removal of damaged, disabled, or snowbound vehicles of all types that have been deemed a hazard to the motoring public or for towing required as necessary and determined to be lawful and appropriate for law enforcement actions within the township. In lieu of continuing the practice of soliciting bids for towing services, Attorney Jennifer Aldifer has drafted a comprehensive ordinance that accomplishes the following items. So it allows the township manager to execute contracts with towing entities, confirms the fact that the Board of Commissioners will establish the fees for towing services within the approved fee schedule of the township, which fee schedule is approved via resolution at the first meeting of the year, and incorporates specifications and requirements that are consistent with past practices and the requirements of the township, and establishes requirements for insurance and minimum qualifications of the towing entities. The ordinance was advertised for adoption in the October tenth issue of the Parkland Press. It was also sent to the Department of Law. No public comments were received. This ordinance was extensively reviewed by the Police Department, so it is ready for adoption.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions?
We did check your insurance, correct?
Yes, it's a requirement that we have to be named as an additional insured, and that they have all the appropriate limits, correct?
Any other board comments? Any public comment? Nothing online. I need a motion to proceed with adoption of said towing ordinance. Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Peichel?
I saw, ah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, could not hear you. Motion carries five to zero. Then to item eight, Resolutions. Eight A, we have a resolution appointing Jennifer Aldifer, Esquire, as a solicitor to the Planning Commission of the Township of South Whitehall, and further appointing her as Assistant Solicitor to the Township of South Whitehall, approving a revision to the adopted 2024 Schedule of Fees to provide for an amended Schedule D with which authorizes professional staff review fees for the position of Director of Legal Affairs. And Tom, if you please present this agenda item.
Thank you. Section twelve oh one of Article twelve Township Solicitor of the First Class Township Code provides that the Board of Commissioners may appoint and determine the compensation of a township solicitor and as needed special counsel. The township solicitor or special counsel must be licensed to practice law in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and may be an individual or a law firm, partnership, association, or professional corporation. The township solicitor or special counsel shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. Township management has identified a unique opportunity to create a new position entitled Director of Legal Affairs, which employees should be responsible for providing expert and strategic legal advice and counsel to the township on a wide range of issues relating to existing and new local and state legislation, compliance with the First Class Township Code, state and federal regulations, and the ongoing review of land development plans and agreements for compliance with township requirements. The position of Director of Legal Affairs shall serve as the solicitor of the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. The enclosed resolution effectuates said appointment of Jennifer Aldifer, Esquire, to this position. Attorney Jennifer Aldifer has practiced law for nearly twenty years, following the successful completion of a doctor of law degree at the University of Pittsburgh School of Law, and has exemplified the traits of professionalism, competency, and accountability while working closely with South Whitehall Township officials as an attorney at Zeter Law. Attorney Aldifer has demonstrated impeccable level of ethics and integrity, and this new career venture presents both an exciting opportunity for her as well as the township. Enclosed also within this resolution is a revision to the 2024 South Whitehall Township Schedule of Fees. The resolution as drafted provides for an amendment to the 2024 Schedule of Fees to create a new Schedule D amendment, which incorporates and authorizes professional staff review fees for the position of Director of Legal Affairs, including both subdivision and non-subdivision fees. So if the board is so inclined, I would seek a motion by approval of the resolution as presented.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Attorney Aldifer is here this evening with her family. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Certainly in favor of this resolution. A member of the Planning Commission and have worked with Jennifer Attorney Aldifer for several years now. She presents with the utmost knowledge and professionalism in her role. I very much look forward to this new role and working even more closely with you here in the township. I'll open up to the board if there's any comments or questions. None?
I don't think I can restate it any better than Diane said, Jennifer, we're so lucky to have you here, and your work with the township thus far has just been absolutely excellent. And in addition to, certainly, your excellent legal acumen, you're also just a wonderful person to work with. So
Thank you.
we could not be more happy to have you start in this new position.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any public comment before we go for a vote? Anyone online with a comment? At this time, I would need a motion to adopt said resolution appointing Jennifer Aldifer, Esquire, as solicitor to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission, and revision to the 2024 Schedule of Fees to provide for professional staff review fees. I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five to zero. At this time, Attorney Zeter has prepared a statement that he had asked to be read at tonight's meeting. He's not with us this evening. He's on vacation this week. So I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Hoffman at this time.
Thank you. This is a statement prepared by Attorney Joseph Zeter, South Whitehall Township Solicitor. He wishes he could be here to deliver this message in person, but is currently out of state with family. As his law practice partner, I want to say that I echo Joe's comments, which I am about to read. Attorney Jennifer Aldifer has been an integral part of the Zeter Law team for eleven years. She has served our clients exceptionally well during that time. In fact, she has served South Whitehall Township so well that the township has taken a very unusual step by a township in asking her to become a permanent part of the township's staff as Director of Legal Affairs. This is a tremendous compliment to Jennifer regarding her expertise, intelligence, and work ethic. Attorney Aldifer will be missed by all of us at Zeter Law. The township and its citizens will benefit immensely by Ms. Aldifer now devoting her full time and attention to the legal and business affairs of South Whitehall Township. She is a true professional, and I have every confidence she will serve exceptionally well in her new role as she has done in all her prior endeavors. Jennifer, all of us at Zeter Law wish you the best as you embark on this new challenge. We are glad that we will continue to work with you on a day-to-day basis in our role as South Whitehall Township Solicitor as you take on the role of Director of Legal Affairs for the township and continue in your role as solicitor to the Planning Commission. Congratulations, Joseph Zeter, Township Solicitor.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you to Joe also for the gracious send-off. I really appreciate it. And thank you to the commissioners and to Tom for this exciting opportunity to create this new position. Andrew mentioned it, but there really is no higher compliment for an attorney than to receive a job offer from a long-term client. I've done work for South Whitehall almost daily for about eleven years now. The staff, the consultants, everybody here is top-notch, and I obviously enjoy working with everybody. So I'm just really grateful and excited for the opportunity to create something new, and I look forward to starting tomorrow. So thank you.
Congratulations. Then to item eight B, we have a resolution appointing Joseph A. Zeter II, Zeter Law, as the Assistant Solicitor to the Planning Commission for the Township of South Whitehall. And Tom, if you would please present.
Thank you. So with the appointment of Jennifer Aldifer as the Solicitor of the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission, a resolution is now necessary to appoint Attorney Joseph Zeter, Zeter Law, to the position of the Township Assistant Township Planning Commission Solicitor. The enclosed resolution effectuates said appointment of Attorney Joe Zeter to this position.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I know that Attorney Zeter is not here with us this evening, but we are very grateful for his representation of our township on the Planning Commission and for his support for Jennifer's appointment. Is there any comment from the board?
Just one additional comment. We are extremely blessed as commissioners. I think the staff would say probably the same as the township to have such wonderful legal representation, be it Jennifer's Director of Legal Affairs, Attorney Zeter, Attorney Hoffman, and your entire team are alternate solicitors, townships, other counsel that we handle a variety of matters. We're really blessed to have such wonderful legal representation, and I'm happy to see that it will continue in many ways.
Well said. There are no other comments? Is there any public comment? Any online? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to adopt said resolution appointing Joseph A. Zeter II, Zeter Law, as the Assistant Solicitor to the Planning Commission for South Whitehall Township. I move.
Aye.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five to zero. Then item eight C, we have a resolution appointing Engelbert Investment Advisors as third-party administrator to the four fifty-seven B plan. And Tom, if you please present.
Thank you. So the four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan is a voluntary plan offered by the township in which plan participants may make contributions that are not matched by the township. The plan allows for pre-tax deductions of any amount contributed into the plan, which is consistent with IRS regulations. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners previously enacted Ordinance number one zero eight five during a regular public meeting held on March sixth of this year. So the ordinance amended and restated the South Whitehall Township four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan and amended the plan document with an effective date of January first, 2024. So the ordinance and the plan document were enclosed in your packet for a reference. The Pension Committee has developed a policy to evaluate potential new third-party administrators to the four fifty-seven B plan. That policy was also included in the packets for this evening. So Engelbert Advisors LLC has submitted materials that were responsive to the evaluation policy. These materials were reviewed by a subcommittee of the Pension Committee. The subcommittee determined that the materials submitted by Engelbert Advisors LLC were responsive to the township's evaluation policy. So following review, the Pension Committee approved official action to recommend that the Board of Commissioners affirm the appointment of Engelbert Advisors LLC as a third-party administrator to the four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan. The resolution before you this evening confirms and affirms said appointment. Following approval of this appointment by way of the resolution, the third-party administrators for the four fifty-seven B plan will be Engelbert Nationwide and Core Bridge LLC. All eligible employees, either non-union or union of the township, may select either of the third-party administrators in their individual discretion. So I'd seek a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Very good. Are there any comments from the board on this resolution? Any public comment? No one online? I need a motion to adopt said resolution appointing Engelbert Investment Advisors as third-party administrator to the four fifty-seven B plan. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five to zero. Then to item nine A, motions, I have a motion to approve use of fire police to the Asbury Methodist Church Annual Holiday Bazaar on November Bazaar on November the 9th. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So 1941, the Pennsylvania General Assembly enacted the Special Fire Police Law as enumerated in Pennsylvania statutes. So this state law grants local municipalities the authority to confirm and swear in bona fide members of fire companies of special fire police. So as part of the law, it also provides for the governing body of the township to authorize any use of special fire police that is not in accordance with the regular duties. So, for example, any type of special event would need approval of the township governing body. So one such event is scheduled to be held on November 9th from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the location of 1533 Spring House Road, which is for the Asbury United Methodist Church Bazaar, which is held every year. So I'd seek a motion to approve the use of fire, special fire police in accordance with Title 35 for that event.
Very good. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? None online? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. And Item 9B, motion granting permission to Greenwald's Fire Department to proceed with firehouse roof replacement project. And Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So during the course of the 2024 budget, there were three capital projects that were set aside for each of the South Whitehall Township Fire Departments, so Woodlawn, Greenwalds, and Citronia. So looking at each of these capital requests individually, the first we'll take this evening is for Greenwalds. So Greenwalds submitted in their budget for 2024 a project to replace their roof, for which the approval was granted in the total amount of $66,000 in the budget. Greenwalds has submitted a CoStarz price request to demolish the existing roof approximately 50% and replace with new edge material and blocking and so forth, and all relevant materials, gutters, metal brakes, brake metal, edge metal, gutters, and downspouts. So the quote submitted is for the total of $42,500, which is under the budget that was allocated, and they are seeking approval to encumber those funds to move forward with contracting so that it would be encumbered within the 24 budget this year.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. And Item 9C, we have a motion granting permission to Woodlawn Fire Department to proceed with firehouse roof replacement project. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So similar to Greenwalds, Woodlawn Fire Department is requesting to replace their roof at their station building. It's been patched it several times, but at this point, removal and replacement are necessary. So Woodlawn had received approval for $100,000 for this project. Their quote, which is also a CoStarz quote, came in at $63,000. If there's any specific questions, Chief Barry Search is here in attendance, as well as Jeffrey Kemmerer. If there's any questions. If not, would seek a motion to approve so that Woodlawn can encumber these funds in the 24 budget and proceed with the project.
Very good. Thank you for the Representatives for being here tonight. Are there any board questions on this motion? Any public comment? I need a motion granting permission to Woodlawn Fire Department to proceed with firehouse roof replacement project, said project being completed by Allen Kunsman Roofing and Siding Incorporated in the amount of $63,000.
All right.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Good luck with your project. And Item 9D, we have a motion granting permission to Citronia Fire Department to proceed with firehouse engine bay floor repair project. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So as submitted by Citronia Fire Department, the floors in their engine bay need to be repaired. So they're indicating that several areas of the floor have cracked, have become depressed, and have chunks missing. Additionally, the metal flashing under the garage doors has deteriorated. They have obtained a quote in the amount of $31,580 to complete the entire repair, which includes the high-wear broadcast epoxy flooring with urethane top coat and associated guidelines and coloring. So the approval in the budget was for $29,980. Because the other two projects came in under budget, that money would be able to be absorbed in the 24 budget. So with that being said, I would seek a motion to approve this project so that Citronia can encumber the funds and move forward with the project.
Very good. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? None. I need a motion granting permission to Citronia Fire Department to proceed with firehouse engine bay floor repair project, said project being completed by First Responder Flooring LLC in the amount of $31,580. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And Item 9E, I have a motion to proceed with release of security for 4741 Chapman's Road. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present this agenda item.
So this security reduction is for the warehouse project at 4741 Chapman's Road. It was a 102,000-square-foot warehouse, parking, and associated improvements. The project was originally approved in October of 2019, so this kind of gives everybody a feel for how long projects take. They are not now at the maintenance period, so they've completed all their improvements. We had the final inspections for Pitcock. Everything's ready to enter into the maintenance period, so this security reduction represents the reduction to the maintenance amount.
Very good. Thank you. I will ask our Township Engineer, Tony Talarida, from Pitcock Company, if you have any additional comments for the board.
No. No, Dave said it well. They'll be into an 18-month maintenance period, so we'll do an inspection probably 14 to 15 months from now. See if there's anything else that's necessary. This amount that's left should cover any remaining items if they choose not to fix it, but hopefully it all goes well and they'll be able to close all the project.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions? Is there any public comment? Any online comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with security release for 4741 Chapman's Road?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. And Item 9F, we have a motion to approve advertising and placement of vehicles and equipment on municipal auction site. I'll ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. South Whitehall Township Public Works Department is respectfully requesting permission to advertise vehicles and equipment for auction on the municipal bid site. Attached to this memo is the complete packet listing the vehicles and the equipment that will be placed on municipal. The revenue generated from this sale of the vehicles and equipment will be put into the Capital Reserve Fund to help offset the cost for future new vehicles and equipment. There's also a resolution stating anything under $2,000 we do not have to bring to the board. We did include that into the packet with everything that is under $2,000, just for informational purposes, so the board knows what we are going to be advertising on the board. The conservative estimate total for this year's vehicle equipment sales is $20,600 on municipal bid. Public Works is respectfully requesting a motion to approve advertising and placement of vehicles and equipment on the municipal auctions.
Very good. Herb, thank you and your team for preparing this document for us and for including even the under $2,000 ones for our review. It was very interesting. It's very helpful for us. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment? Any online comments on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve advertising and placement of vehicles and equipment on municipal auction site?
Take the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. And Item 9G, motion to proceed with bid regarding furnish and delivery of police uniforms. I'll ask Interim Chief Brown to please present.
Yes. One bid was received and opened on October 25th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. to furnish and deliver police uniforms. The bid tabulation is attached. The bid was advertised once in a local publication, as required by law, and 36 vendors downloaded and received the bid documents. The submitted bid was reviewed by Donna Zachru and myself, and we were both in agreement with awarding the contract to Patriot Workwear. This contract was previously awarded to Patriot in 2020 with subsequent contract extensions up until this point, and we are satisfied with the service and the uniform quality, the items that is provided in Philidoo Contract would provide the same. We are recommending and respectfully requesting permission to issue a contract to Patriot Workwear for the purchase of police uniforms on an as-needed basis at the submitted bid unit cost price.
Very good. Thank you, Interim Chief Brown and Donna Zachru from our Finance Department for assisting in this bid process and preparing this for us this evening. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment? Any online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. And Item 10, Correspondence and Information. I'll ask our Township Manager to please review our boards and commissions.
Thank you. So the upcoming meetings and events for the township are as follows. Thursday, November 7, 7:00 p.m. is the zoning hearing board. It's actually canceled. Monday, November 11, 7:00 p.m., Parks and Recreation Board meeting. Tuesday, November 12, 6:00 p.m. is a crime watch meeting. Wednesday, November 13, 10:00 a.m. is a Civil Service Commission meeting. Thursday, November 14, 7:00 p.m. is the Planning Commission meeting. And Wednesday, November 20, 7:00 p.m. is a Board of Commissioners meeting. So all of these meetings, for which the details will be posted on the township website, and all these meetings will occur at the Township Municipal Building.
Very good. Thank you. And Item 10B, South Whitehall Township Hometown Heroes Banner Program. Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to announce that the Hometown Heroes Program for South Whitehall Township is actually opening up this Friday, November 8th, and we will accept applications through March 7th, 2025. So the new banners would be installed in the spring of '25 in advance of Memorial Day, which is Monday, May 26, 2025. So the banner features the service member's name, rank, and title, branch of armed service, era of service or war served, service dates, prestigious medals, photo, and a sponsored by section to include the sponsor's name. So we've provided an example of the banner on the township website, as well as the application materials, and there's a process by which it needs to be followed. So sponsors must submit a completed and signed application form, a photograph of the veteran in uniform, preferably a service portrait, a copy of military separation paperwork or certificate, so a D214 form is preferred, and they can be submitted, the completed applications, in three ways. Hand-delivered to the front desk at the Township Municipal Building, emailed to info@southwhitehall.com, or mailed to the U.S. Postal Service. So applications will be accepted on a rolling basis, and once, you know, the process we've accepted, you know, we've completed all the 12 initial spots, there will not be any additional ones available for this year, but the township will look at subsequent locations for future programs.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Will, if more residents request than we have space for, will we have a waiting list for next year, or will we just open it up each year?
To be determined, but I would envision that it would be opened up again in a open process, similar to this one.
Very good. A wonderful program. I certainly do want to thank you, Tom, and all involved in bringing this to fruition for our township and for the honoring of our veterans. Anyone on the board have any comments or questions?
Tom, there's 12 rules that you have for around the township building, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if we get more than 12 applicants, where would you look to hang them in future years so that we can maybe get ahead of it if we need any, anything from PennDOT or anything like that to hang?
Yeah.
EPL, stuff like that.
That's the question, you know, especially like along the Walbert Avenue corridor, in terms of what requirements would be from the utility providers as well as PennDOT. Basically, you know, an area that wouldn't require any additional approvals would be our park system, so that would be probably the second location that we would focus on from the interest of, you know, having a central location in which a number of people gather as well. So that would be the next strategic location.
Any other board comment?
I do have a comment. I am really excited to see this come to fruition. This has been coming for a long time. I do remember suggesting it during our comp plan process, our landscapes process, and I even had it, and appropriately so, as a question for our last year's budget. It took all of us to make this happen, so I want to thank my fellow board members, Tom, staff, management, everyone who helped make this happen. I think it's such a beautiful and heartfelt way to honor our past and present veterans. And I just want to add that my little hometown of Northampton has this program, and when I go home to see my mother, I love seeing all these banners with these images of our heroes, our hometown heroes. They're our neighbors, our friends, and I'm just so excited to have it come right here to South Whitehall. Thank you.
Very well said. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Direction Discussion. We have a motion to proceed with advertising of requests for proposal, RFP, regarding the South Whitehall Transportation Plan Addendum. And I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please present.
Yes, thank you. So this is furthering along with the comprehensive plan implementation. We had three items in the implementation plan, active transportation, the safety plan, and then we had a third one was the transportation plan. The first phase that we've already undergone is the, we're calling it Engage Active and Safety, so we're looking at the active transportation plan and the safety plan in that first phase. The second phase, we're looking at reclassifying roads, looking at the freight network, identifying truck routes, truck restrictions, things like that, and then also some congestion analysis and management strategies. You may recall, it was a few months ago at this point, we were before you, looking for a similar RFQ to look at probe data so that we could get the consultant to kind of get that data prepared for us in a usable form so that we could then write this next phase of the transportation plan. What we're looking for now is to add, do an addendum to that RFQ where we're looking for them to prepare the report, the full plan, so that we can kind of evaluate timing and see where they think they can come in and what budget, so that we can kind of budget our time a little bit more, because there's a lot going on. And in fact, we'll probably be before you at the next few meetings with things. So we want to put this down the street, hopefully get back at the first meeting in December, and get this one way or the other before you to move it forward in the beginning of the year.
Excellent. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate, again, the work that you and Chris Stroller and your department do to continue to move the comp plan forward, and certainly traffic here in the township is certainly something that we, as Commissioners, hear a lot of feedback from, and I'm really excited to see us continue to move forward, to study this, to come up with a game plan for public safety. So I thank you for that. I'll open up to the board if there's any comments or questions on this agenda item. Any public comment? Anyone online with a comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with advertising of RFP requests for proposal regarding the South Whitehall Transportation Plan Addendum? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We have no old business. Agenda Item 13 is courtesy of the floor. Again, opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to address the board? Anyone online? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Peichel?
Aye, yep, sorry.
That's okay. Motion carries five to zero. Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session to schedule this evening. I do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.